Good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran and I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission Meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance tonight and this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to ask the clerk to call the roll.
Rosa Torres, excused. Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Paul Mendez.
Present.
Kim Larriman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield.
Present.
Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jay Handler.
Present.
And Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are eight members present. We do have a quorum.
The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers that are appointed by city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use decisions on the community, livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live on the City of Pasco's Facebook page on Charter Spectrum Cable, PSC Channel 191, and will be rebroadcast several times during the next month. The meeting is also being recorded so you can watch it on the City of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. You click on the video on demand link on the website and make your selection of the meeting there. There are copies of the meeting agenda available on the back table so you may follow along with the meeting. Also at this time, I'd last asked everybody to silence your cellphones to prevent interruptions during our meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please come to the podium, speak clearly into the microphone, and state your name and city of address for your records. Just for note, tonight's meeting is not a public hearing. It's a workshop-only session, so we will not have any public meeting comments or sessions, but all are welcome to hear our proceedings. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience and the Planning Commission that Washington state law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening not only to be fair, but also appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits the Planning Commission members from participating in discussions or decision in which the member may have a direct interest or may either be benefited or harmed by the Planning Commission's decision. Any objection to any Planning Commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or it will be waived. First, are there any Planning Commission members who have a declaration at this time regarding any of the agenda items? Let the record show there were no declarations. Second, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would object to any Planning Commission member hearing any of the items on the agenda? Let the record show there were also no declarations. We as the Planning Commission need and value your input. It helps us to understand the issues more clearly and to make better recommendations to city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your input here at the Planning Commission meetings is your only opportunity to get facts and opinions placed onto the official record the city council will use to make the decision. I encourage you to take full advantage. The first item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the meeting minutes from March 21st, 2024. These meetings minutes were provided and mailed to all the commissioners ahead of time. I trust you had an opportunity to take a look at them, and if there are no questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes.
Aye, so moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Handler, seconded by Commissioner Mendez. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The record shows the meeting minutes were unanimously approved. All right, we have no old business and we have no public hearings on the agenda, but we do have several workshop items, so we'll jump right in to the workshop items. And our first workshop item is a presentation from the Benton Franklin Housing Authority.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we have an opportunity to hear a presentation from the executive director of the Benton Franklin Housing Consortium, Matt Truman, who will provide the commission and the general public with an update on efforts moving forward with the housing consortium. So Matt, welcome.
Welcome.
Matt Truman, City of Kennewick resident, but I was a longtime Pasco resident for many years. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come, give you an update on the nearly-created Benton Franklin Housing Consortium, which is basically just an association of the Pasco Housing Authority, Pasco and Franklin County Housing Authority, and the Kennewick Housing Authority. What we've done is we've created a consortium, which is just nothing more than an agreed-upon partnership between our two agencies. Since we're so closely related in our mission and what we do in the tri-cities, it made sense that we create this consortium at this time to find a way to house more people, both in Franklin and Benton County and all three of the tri-cities. Creating a consortium, one, we're hoping as a consortium with HUD, it allows us a bigger presence, more applying for funding, helps us be more competitive, to be honest, against Westside Cities, against Spokane, because instead of applying for funding for just the City of Pasco and Franklin County and its residents, we now have 300 some residents that we can say we're applying for funding for, and we're hoping that will make us better able to bring in services, not just to the City of Pasco and Franklin County, but to all the residents. We see it as a win for both counties. Second, the reason we wanted to create it is it helps us streamline some of our similar processes in the community. So for example, lease-up application phase, people trying to find housing, we can get them into their housing faster. There's not as much confusion between the agencies of what I have to do, what I have to bring. We're trying to streamline those processes. We also want to use it as a way to leverage some of our purchasing power. If we can place larger orders as a consortium, hopefully finding better price breaks and so on. Three, it helps us remove some of the confusion that frankly already exists. So we have a lot of people who come to our Housing Authority in Pasco and think we're the same thing as the Kennewick Housing Authority and vice versa, just because the names are so similar. So we did it for those and many other reasons, but overall, we did it because we think it will help the people of the City of Pasco and Franklin County get better services, because it will remove a lot of the barriers and maybe some of the confusion that exists from having two agencies that are providing the same mission and so on. And so why is it a consortium and a partnership and not like a full merger? We did that on purpose. We didn't want to fully merge, because one, the City of Pasco and Franklin County has different needs than the City of Kennewick, the City of Richland, Benton County. We wanted to be a consortium, because the City of Pasco and Franklin County provides board members for us and so on in Kennewick, and they provide their board members. We wanted to be able to have that distinct difference between Pasco and Kennewick and Richland, because we all have different, every city has its different needs, especially when it comes to affordable housing. Although right now it appeared, you know, most of the cities are trying to increase their affordable housing stock, and especially Pasco, but we did keep it separate for that reason. We wanted to allow that independence between the different entities. Second, we want to go in as a consortium, because to be honest, we wanted to make sure it would work. We didn't want to fully merge as a consortium. It allows us and the Kennewick Housing Authority and their boards to take a look, and if it's actually something that's helping the residents and it's efficient and effective for everybody, then we can move forward with it. But if not, as a consortium, it gets us a way to untangle ourselves and we can go back to how it was before. We're only about three months into it at this point. So far, we've had some successes, because we've been able to bring different community organizations together to give them a unified message of how our processes work, how things are done. If there is a slight difference between Kennewick and Pasco or the two different counties, we can explain that to them. And although we are a consortium, we're not 100% yet agreed on all our policies and procedures, but we're hoping to agree on the ones that will help the most residents and so on. And so that's our plans as a consortium. As far as speaking for the Housing Authority of the City of Pasco and Franklin County, one thing I would like to relate to the board tonight is, of course, we all know the need for more affordable housing stock and workforce housing in our community. The Housing Authority of the City of Pasco is dedicated to this mission also. Over the last few years, we've made as much monetary moves as we can to build up cash and to build up the ability to now begin to purchase land pieces in both the city and the county in the hopes of creating more affordable housing within the city and the county. We'll be aggressively looking for pieces of land. When we're talking one and a half to three and a half acres, something to put apartment buildings on or affordable housing buildings on that we can start building in the next few years. So we'll be hoping, and I can say that we've had a great response from the city. They have been encouraging us in every way, and they've been a great partner in this mission, but we will be in the next few years trying to be more aggressive in building those. One thing that, just to relate to you, when we open up our waitlist for people who want to apply for housing, it gives us instant data of what people need, especially in the City of Pasco, what type of housing, what type of housing sizes they need. So for example, when we open up our waitlist, 80% of the people that apply for housing on our waitlist are looking for one or two-bedroom apartments. We don't get a lot of family bedrooms, or we don't get a lot of big families looking for whatever. And so when we are building things like this and we want to come forward and ask for, you know, these buildings and to move forward in the future, we're going to base it on what we see in the community. So we do see a lot of need for those one- or two-bedroom housing, for the elderly, the disabled. We know we have a lot of workforce plans and stuff coming in. We'd like to look at workforce housing that's affordable for those types of people. That's our main goal right now. Like I said, we're at the initial phase of that. We're just at the very, very beginning phase of it. It's something that we, I hope to come back and give you more updates on in the future, and give you more updates on how the consortium has been effective going forward. But thank you for your time, and I appreciate being here and what you do for the city.
Can you take questions?
I will, if you.
All right. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Commissioner Moffett here. So just so we have it on record and the public knows, can you tell us your top one to top three projected and current challenges?
Our most current challenge is finding available units for the amount of vouchers that we can give to people. So for example, right now, we have enough vouchers to house probably 50 to 60 more families if we could find those units. Kennewick, for example, has the ability to house another 100 families instantly. Our biggest issue is the lack of units available to give to people. We can give vouchers all day to people to go out and look. It's just really hard in the market right now to find those units and then to also find them within the price point that they're allowed to rent at. We have our income limits up to 120%. They're as high as they can go, and that's helped a little bit, but keeping pace with the rent increases has been tough. We have seen over the last 12 months, so that's kind of started to level off, and we're starting to see a few more things opening up and housing a few more people. But if I could wave a magic wand, I would say we need more places to rent that are within our units. As far as other challenges we have, I think we're moving in the right direction as far as building and stuff like that. The City of Pasco has been really good about looking at helping us with grants, at helping us think of ways to increase affordable housing stock, same with the other cities also, so we appreciate that. Yeah, that would probably be the top right now. That's what we want to do. We want to house people, and so.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yeah, I just had a question. I'm not sure if you mentioned, did you say you have some kind of MOU that you use?
Yeah, we do have an MOU. Yeah, we have an MOU, so when people come into our Housing Authority or Kennewick's Housing Authority, they can house in any of the tri-cities, in fact, in any of the counties. And so just because they get a voucher in Pasco or they get a voucher in Kennewick doesn't mean they have to stay within those counties. They can locate themselves anywhere.
Thank you. That was my second question. Appreciate that.
Yeah, like I said, our main goal is to start building, to deconcentrate from the area that we're at in East Pasco and look for places in West Pasco or Western Pasco and places in Eastern Pasco and try to spread out some of the units so we can build.
I have a question, Commissioner Crutchfield. With some of the current apartments that are already being finished, like particularly one on Road 68, the one up on Road 100, the huge complex there, do any of those buildings, are they required or suggested or required to allot so much percentage of their overall units for vouchers or whatever? I don't know.
It depends on the construction and the way they bundle it, to be honest. There are some construction deals that are put together that they get, will get certain breaks, tax breaks, if they allow a certain percentage of affordable housing units in there, and they negotiate that with the bank and the builder and so on. Those ones, I'm not sure, because to do that, they would have to come approach one of the housing authorities and say, would you be able to fill these, say, 15 units in this building with vouchers? That is something that we're currently working on with an agency, with somebody, and it's something that has been done in the past, and that's where we can really partner with private business and other things to have a win-win situation where we can, you know, we're not asking for all the units, but if we could get a portion of them, you know, it works really well, because the studies have shown that if you can put people who have affordable rents in with people who have higher rents, the outcome of those children, the outcomes of those families by living in that situation generally benefits everyone. And so that's kind of a goal, is to have a mixed-income type of apartment like that.
Thank you.
How about commissioners on the phone? Any questions from commissioners on the phone?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Larriman. And to piggyback on what our presenter just said, actually, there was a recent study that the Pasco Little, or Grid Kids League put out, and that is about the combination of children being raised together and playing together in sports and such, and living near each other of different social economic levels. So thanks for mentioning that out to everyone as a teacher. I greatly value that, too. But leading to my question, you had mentioned some benefits to developers, those who own apartments, to be able to partner with your organization. Can you share a little bit about the benefits to potential HUD landlords to receive vouchers, to accept those into their apartments complexes, voucher system? And then is there a training or certification process that we can learn a little bit about or share out with those listening?
Yeah, I can give you a quick summary on how to become a Section 8 landlord, and it's a lot simpler than people think. It is just the willingness to do it. The benefits of being a Section 8 landlord, of course, is that we provide the candidates for you. We can give you, like I said, I could send you 50 candidates to put into your housing right away. The landlord still gets to run the credit checks. They still get to run the background checks. They still get to decide whether they want to accept them or not. If they accept a Section 8 voucher, they get a guaranteed portion of the rent, no matter what happens. If that person loses their job, if anything happens, we will continue to pay our portion of the rent, which could be as much as 90% or excuse a little bit. So you have a little more of a guaranteed income. We also make a stipulation that they have to live there for at least 12 months before they're allowed to move out, unless there's a mutually agreed decision with the landlord that says they're allowed to move out. And so between those three or four things, we think it's attractive, especially nowadays with some of the rent issues that are going on and issues with that, that we can provide that guarantee. And a lot of our Section 8 tenants are very responsible comparatively to others. They know the value of what they're getting. They know the value of a voucher, and they're trying to improve themselves. And so very rarely do they put that in danger by being noncompliant with the landlord and so on. And so we encourage anybody who wants to be a landlord, if you go to our website, we have all the steps on how to do it. Basically, you come and see us. We will send an inspector out to inspect your property, make sure it meets the HUD standards for livability, and once it passes that, then they can go ahead and start renting to whoever they need to. And we will, of course, provide as many candidates as they want, so. H A C P F C dot org.
Just one question I had is, so I know, I think, I see the benefits of the combination. Does it, does the combination always matter, or do the grants often go by the city or like the number of people served or population? So does it vary by grant?
Sometimes does vary by grant, which you can apply for. So sometimes you can get more points if you want to put homeless people in, or if you want to put transitional people, or if you have veteran assistance, VASH people in there. All these things can create more points. It depends on the grant and what you're applying for, but there doesn't have to be, you know, the minimum number is sometimes in there, but it's pretty low. And to be honest, it's more of what type of housing than the number of housing that you're providing. So but it's always up to us to decide, and the city and the builders decide, if they want to take that on or not. For example, there are some builders who are like, I don't want to, you know, I don't mind, you know, veteran assistant housing, but I'm not interested in transitional housing at this time, kind of thing, so.
Great, thank you. On the subject, I just was actually listening to the radio. The USDA just released 43 million in ag worker specialized grants to the region, which is pretty cool. So if folks want to build that, to that worker housing, that would be a great use.
And that's what our tax credit housing is that we have over on Fourth and Pearl. It's actually designated for migrant housing, and that's who makes up the majority of our residents in that. And as I mentioned, alluded to before, the land that we had just recently sold was that land that was behind there. And the reason we sold that land was because we have so much public housing and affordable housing in that area. We wanted to break that up, and like she had mentioned earlier, maybe look for other part. We wanted to deconcentrate the amount that was in one area of the city and go elsewhere.
Yeah, go ahead.
So you, pardon my naivety here. So you actually have a team, I'm guessing, that goes out and actively looks for land and does feasibility studies and works with the various municipalities in terms of getting permits and approvals and stuff like that?
Yeah, we do. Most housing authorities will hire consultant groups that specialize in that, and they take a certain amount of the development fees for doing that service, and they specialize in, and that's all they do. And so when you're ready to take on that type of project, you find one of those groups generally, and they're experts in the field. The hardest thing for housing authorities in general is finding land, which is something hard for everybody, but just finding those pieces of land that we can build on and then putting the deals together. But once we have that and we can put it together, then we have plenty of consultants and that are willing to help us, so. There are, and it's something that doesn't take overnight. It takes years to do. For example, they are, you know, they are building, we are, to see, Kennewick Housing Authority is building an apartment complex on Gum Street over on 10th and Gum. That is expected to, even though we're past the funding phase and they found the land and they're getting the permitting phase, it's still going to be about another year and a half before we see people housed in there. So these things take, you know, one to four years to get completed, depending on how we can do with it. Where the city of, the cities go forth can help us is through this permitting, help us to make sure we navigate that correctly and do what's right.
Yeah, it's complicated. I mean, once you've identified an idea or a place, that just starts the ball rolling, you know?
Yeah, and we want to be a good partner with the community. We want to put in apartments that make sense and what's needed in the community and in the right places.
All right. Any other questions from the commissioners?
All right. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to come back in anytime you need updates, so thank you again.
Thanks for being here. All right, we will move on to the second workshop item, which is CPA 2023 001, which is the Road 100 and Argent Land Use Comprehensive Land Use Amendment Proposal, Application, I should say.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. This is the second step of a two-step process related to amendments to the Pasco Comprehensive Plan. Back in the fall, city council adopted a resolution which placed this item on the docket for review, and so now this item is being evaluated for the criteria as established in the Pasco Municipal Code. So this is a comprehensive plan land use amendment for roughly three acres, just under three acres, located on the southeast corner of Road 100 and Argent Road. The proposal is to go from low-density residential to mixed residential and commercial. A SEPA, an environmental determination of nonsignificance, was issued in June of 2023. This is a vicinity map. The outline of the two parcels, which totaled that nearly three acres, is outlined in that little red line, so apologies for the thin line there, but it is southeast of the intersection there. And here is the future land use map, which shows the surrounding land uses within the immediate vicinity. The approval criteria in the Pasco Municipal Code provide staff, the Planning Commission, and eventually city council with a list of criteria for which to evaluate and base a potential decision and recommendation on. I'll read those off for the public and for the Planning Commission, and that criteria is found in Chapter 25.215 of the Pasco Municipal Code, and that is the amendment bears a substantial relationship to the public health, safety, welfare, and protection of the environment. The amendment is consistent with the requirements of, that's the State's Growth Management Act and the RCW, and with any relevant portions of the city's adopted comprehensive plan not affected by that amendment, the proposed amendment corrects an obvious mapping error, or the proposed amendment addresses an identified deficiency in the comprehensive plan. There is also a second set of criteria that was added in the Pasco Municipal Code, which also requires the amendment to be evaluated upon these criteria, which relate to the effect upon the physical environment, the effect on open space and natural futures, compatibility with and impact on adjacent land uses and surrounding neighborhoods, the adequacy of an impact on community facilities such as utility roads, et cetera, the quantity and location of a land plan for the proposed land use type, and the densities associated and the demand for such land, the current and projected density in the area, and the effect of any upon other aspects of the comprehensive plan. What I wanted to do was, in the staff report, you'll find several things. One is you'll find a thorough preliminary staff evaluation of the proposed land use as based upon the criteria that was just shared. You'll also find, there's obviously a public engagement component associated with comprehensive planning, and there were several public hearings conducted during the docketing stage. Comments received during that process are attached to the staff report and available for staff and the public's review. With that, I wanted to summarize some of the initial evaluation conducted by staff. This isn't the final evaluation, and as just a reminder, this is just a workshop, and we'll follow this up with a public hearing, which will be accompanied. A public hearing, which will, uh, be accompanied by public notices, et cetera. Uh, so the requested land use is that of the mixed residential and commercial designation. Um, it, uh, provides for diversity of housing options and, uh, via various zoning districts. Um, including, uh, commercial and retail. Uh, it's, uh, essentially a designation, uh, for providing neighborhood, community, and regional shopping, along with, um, variety of housing options as well. The, uh, uh, Pasco municipal code, um, provides a. Land use table which describes the appropriate zoning districts adopted by council, along with the, uh, target threshold densities. So currently, the land use is low-density residential, which permits anywhere from three to six housing units per acre. Um, uh, the proposed mixed residential and land use, uh, designation allows, uh, between five to twenty-nine. I I do wanna again emphasize that this is a non-project proposal, so there's no project associated with this. There's no zone change associated with this. And there's no permit associated with this project. It is simply a land use, um, proposal. Um, with respects to the proposed amendments consistency with both the Growth Management Act and the Pasco's own comprehensive plan. Generally, Pasco's comprehensive plan emphasizes a diversity of land uses in areas that. Um, uh, lend themselves to, uh, provide the essential services. Um, in this particular case. Uh, location, um, there are nearby, uh, utilities with respects to water, sewer. Um, both Road one hundred and Argent are primary arterials in the city of Pasco. Uh, a lot of our mixed residential and commercial land use abut, mixed, uh, uh, abut, uh, arterial roadways. There was a nearby, uh, fire station, uh, which just had a grand opening, uh, maybe a half mile at most, just up to the north. There is, uh, the, uh, significant amount of infrastructure work taking place right now along the Interstate one eighty-two corridor. Particularly at Broadmore and Road one hundred. Um, and there's also been several, uh, recent developments in the nearby vicinity. Increasing variety of housing options and retail opportunities as well. So certainly an area that that, um, within the nearby vicinity is experience change. And, uh, at the location of two, uh, primary arterials. Um, I certainly can see the interest in in that, uh, moving forward as well or being of interest as well. The, uh, proposed amendment, some of the other criteria was with respects to does this correct, uh, a mapping error? This is not a mapping error. Um, so this is not correct a mapping error. And, uh, it does the proposed amendment address a deficiency in the comprehensive plan. And the proposed amendment, um, does not address a specific deficiency in the comprehensive plan. However, as you can see in the staff report. Um, there are several, um, goals and policies in the comprehensive plan, which both, um. Uh, at least from a preliminary evaluation are met by the proposal and some that may not, um, be as clear. Uh, for example, several of the, um. Uh, land use, uh, elements emphasize diversity of land uses, uh, responding to market demands, et cetera. Uh, putting, uh, new development and redevelopment opportunities in areas that can, um, efficiently accommodate that kind of growth. Um, I I think this area could be described as a as a part of the city that experienced dramatic growth. Um, and, uh, if the proposal were to move forward and if a permit, uh, were to be, uh, applied for. Uh, subsequent environmental review along with, uh, development review, which consists of, uh, accommodations. And a review for traffic, parks and recreation, police, uh, water, sewer availability, et cetera. Those would be done at that project level stage, not at the land use level. But generally, the land use, uh, element and the housing element and the economic development of the adopted Pasco comprehensive plan. Um, this proposal at this stage would seem to be in line with those, um, proposals. I I think one thing to be cognizant about is while there's certainly significant, uh, growth happening all over the city. Um, we certainly wanna be sensitive to, uh, the the changing, uh, um, uh, the potential for change in in any neighborhood. While also respecting the city's, um, uh, need for growth. So with that, there there's no recommendation for, uh, provided today. Given that this is just a workshop. It's been, um, several months since it's been in front of the planning commission. Um, next steps for staff and the planning commission will include coming back, uh, with this item likely in May, uh, with a notice for a public hearing. Um, along with, uh, more refined, uh, evaluation. Um, there will be, um, an opportunity for public comment. And, um, if, uh, planning commission, um, feels comfortable, a recommendation can certainly be made at the May meeting. Um, but if not, we can certainly plan for a workshop and recommendation at the June meeting. Uh, we don't have any specific timeline requirements to issue a determination. However, it is in our best interest, um. As prescribed, uh, by the Growth Management Act to to do these at a most reasonable time. So we we would like to move this forward based on. Um, discussions and guidance from the planning commission before it's, um, off to council for final determination. So with that. I'll conclude, uh, the presentation, um, and happy to answer any questions I can for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, so can you, uh, I I wanna make sure we also understand with clarity. So there's two criteria. There's the there's the four criteria, and then there's an additional, what is it? It's eight criteria? Or or seven, seven or eight criteria. Um, I think I realize you're in the preliminary review stage. When you come back, will you kind of have an assessment based on each one of those? I mean, obviously, we know the answer to some of them. It's not a mapping error. So it doesn't meet that bar. Um, but I suspect you'll come back with 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 the next step would be. Hey, on each of these, it either is acceptable, that criteria, or not applicable, or or something like that. Is that the plan?
Yes, essentially what will be, uh, in front of the planning commission next month is, um, a little bit more of a clarity and with respects. So for example, the effect upon the physical environment. Well, this is a land use only change, so technically the answer is no. However, if a project is applied for, and a permit is applied for, et cetera. Obviously, there could be a change in the physical environment, but there's an environmental checklist that is, um. Uh, required for evaluation and review that that is, um, in place to help ensure that, uh, any potential impacts have the necessary mitigations. But, you know, to answer that specific question on this land use amendment, the answer is no, because there is no project. It is a non-project action.
Commissioners, uh, feedback or questions or clarity on this process? Cause it can be a little bit convoluted and complex, so. So we understand it. This is our workshop to really understand it in preparation for the public, uh, hearings.
Commissioner Moffett here. Um, so. I understand that it's just a land use, but when there's, when there's not a project there, it just. It opens the door very wide. So while the law may say it's a land use. The reality is we have to look broader than that as a commission. Am I not right? Because if if the law says we have to, um, say, okay, it's just a land use thing, so, oh, it must be okay. But yet we're opening the door for God knows what, so to speak, right? And so you never know what's gonna come in there. And so, I mean, to me, the way I look at this is, it's a neighborhood. It's not a commercial place. So what you're doing is you're opening up your neighborhood, your neighborhood, your neighborhood, everyone's neighborhood. To all of a sudden, a business be put next door to your house. If you allow something like this to happen. And once we allow something like this to happen in one neighborhood. What's to stop it from happening in every neighborhood or another neighborhood? So I, so I'm kinda leaning towards no, honestly. Um, but I I just wanna get a better understanding, because. It it's it's a big problem for me to say, I want, I want to put a commercial building, I don't care what it is, in a neighborhood. I mean, we need to protect our neighborhoods. And I I read through all these letters that were given to me. Thank you very much for all these. Um, very impressed. Thank you to everyone out there that sent in a letter. But there was, unless I missed one, a hundred percent was against this. There's not a single letter from a neighbor person saying they're in favor of it. So if there's a neighbor out there that's in favor of it. They need to send letters in because it's obvious by what was given to us that it's overwhelmingly not wanted. In the city of Pasco. Am I wrong with any of that?
I'll be, uh, cautious, cause I I cannot speak for this attorney, so I'll I'll have to get back to you with respects to what you'd like to consider. What I will share is that from a staff perspective, you know, we're required to evaluate based on the adopted criteria, which is why we present. And reemphasize the adopted criteria. So we will provide an evaluation based on those criteria. The planning commission, um, uh, has that criteria to use, uh, as a reference and as a guide. But ultimately, you know, uh, the planning commission and then the city council would be the final decision maker. Um, based on the decision-making process that, uh, one would like to use. With with respects to the potential end use, it it certainly, it it could be anything allowed within the land use. And any potential of the zoning code, um, allowances. Um, at this stage, where we don't have a zone change in front of us, and we certainly don't have a project permit in front of us, so. That would be potentially a slippery slope when you're evalu- evaluating a, um. A land use, a land use only matter, uh, based on a, um, a potential, uh, project. Which has not yet been through any, that's where it gets a little gray, and I wanna be careful with my words here. Um, that's where it can be a little slipper, because we don't know what the end product could be, because, um, any project's gonna be limited. Um, and have to comply with the rules and regulations that we have in place. Um, and, uh, and and planning commission and council obviously set the rules on what we allow in the city. In terms of uses and intensities and form, et cetera. Um, and, uh, there's other things to take into consideration with regard to dedications for right-of-way, infrastructure improvement. Sometimes those make projects not pencil out. Sometimes they don't, uh, uh, pose an impact. Um, but at this stage of it being just a land use only matter, um, it it could be difficult to to gauge. What the impacts are when we don't know, don't know yet what a project application consists of.
I think you answered some of that, the difference between. The land use and then the zone change and when it gets to council. But in reading all of this very carefully, it does, it it does concern me quite a bit about the mixed residential slash commercial. And when it's stating it is impossible to be to predict with any degree of accuracy. Compatibility and impact of proposed amendment on adjacent land uses and surrounding neighborhoods. That concerns me very much. Um, and it does speak to number C there on the approval criteria. Currently, the designation would allow, um, for, I'm not mistaken with my notes, um. Oh, my notes. But the the proposed change, actually. The existing plan designation would allow up to six units per acre residential. And if this was to go forward, it would be more than double that existing, more than double. When we don't even know what the plan would be. Um, I feel like zoning is so important. But a big part of it, I think, right at the top of the the tier would be to protect surrounding. Neighborhoods, communities that have been established. And it's true, there is commercial. There is, uh, already a gas station, convenience store, sandwich shop, dental office, all of that pushed way to the north. Where you're gonna have all the infrastructure already in place with the all the work that's being done on the the roadways and the highway right now. Moving south, as you're getting closer to court, you're really infringing upon established. Neighborhoods that do have the lower density, and I think those have to be recognized as well. And one last question that I did have, because there is a section in here. Um, that the proposed amendment doesn't interfere with increased risk or disturbance to. Public health, protection of the environment. But then there's one, there's safety there. And I just wanted. More of an explanation about how it would not impact safety. Maybe I'm jumping the gun and it before. Um, that would be down the road. But there's already a lot of traffic from the schools, from Chihuahua, up Road one hundred. I think that not knowing what's going in there, but we know it's much higher density, is a very slippery slope. I agree. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kendrick?
Yeah, just a little bit of a clarification, Mr. Gonzalez. What's the difference between? This, this, um, land use change and and this and this and a rezone? I I I mean, isn't that effectively what we're doing with rezoning this property?
No, re- rezones are, uh, an item that are, um, conducted through the Pasco hearing examiner. Um, with final approval, uh, by the Pasco city council. So rezones go to the hearing examiner, then to council. Land use changes, um, cause those are associated with the comprehensive plan. Those go through the planning commission like we are this evening and then the city council. Um, so this is a land use only, uh, proposal. The applicant, um, is not required to request a rezone. If the existing zone is, uh, compliant with the the proposed zone change. Um, if the existing zone is not of use or the proposed project that an applicant might have in mind or their intended zone. Is not what currently is in place, they would be required to apply for a zone change, a petition for a rezone. Which has a separate set of criteria, uh, public hearing, et cetera. And those, uh, hearings are conducted by the Pasco hearing examiner. And the decision is based on whether a petition for a zone change meets the criteria for a zone change. And then again, council will have the final decision on that. So, um, in in a in a way, a a land use. Um, change is certainly separate from a zone change, but obviously they're all tied together, given the relationship between land use and zoning and project. And permitting, et cetera. Did I answer your question, Commissioner?
I I think it didn't. I think I knew that, but I wanted to clarify a little bit, but thank you.
Um, I'm gonna make sure we go to the phone for, I think, Commissioner Teal, Commissioner Lerman, Commissioner Campos. Any questions or feedback from you on the phone?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Campos. Uh, Jacob, I think you already answered my question. So if we say, let's say for this land use and we. Don't approve that, um, the applicant will still have the opportunity to request for a rezone. Is that correct?
They would be limited to the zone, uh, the zoning districts that are allowed within the existing low-density land use.
All right, thank you. And then my second follow-up was just, um, basically, is there any way, cause it it, there is no project that is tied to this. And I think with all my fellow commissioners, I think we're kinda struggling with that. But in knowing that there's no project, is there any way that we can somehow just maybe see some type of report or? Data that kinda just shows us the impacts when you make a change from a low to a mixed?
Uh, yeah, I think staff can put together a little bit of information with respects to, uh, potential, uh, development densities. Um, it it'd be limited, given that there's no project. However, we can certainly put together, um, a little bit of information that hopefully addresses that question.
Yeah, I think that would help, just to help clarify, um, some of the stuff. I mean, we obviously know. Traffic's gonna be impacted, but maybe there's something else that we're not aware of, um, would kind of be beneficial for us to take this discussion further. Thank you.
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Go ahead.
You go ahead and piggyback off of, um, what some of the fellow commissioners said, um. If we're we're taking time to, um, explain the difference between, uh, zone change, land use. With seasoned commissioners and, um, and I understand the point that Heather said about that. He wanted to make sure that, um, others have a chance to be able to hear it. But if we can be able to see it. Um, in like some sort of flow chart, an infograph, then that will greatly help out our audience as well. To be able to, um, understand the process. Um, we have these very formal processes here in the planning commission, and it's difficult for the public to follow along. Um, to the fact that, um, there's a certain amount of, uh, training, um, vocabulary and such that, um, goes along with it. And so, um, an infograph on that, as well as, like I've said in the past, infograph on, uh, what are the next stages? Um, in this, um, whether it gets approved or doesn't get approved, as well as, um, I would like to. Uh, go back to what, um, Commissioner Crutchfield was talking about far as the impact on, um. Schools and public safety. Um, how does this tie into our, uh. Twenty-year master plant, transportation master plan, um, if we can be able to tie in and be able to show that there is some future mitigation. Uh, for that area, uh, for possible change use or, um, to allow us to understand that at this point in time, there is none. But there's, um, potential opportunity to go ahead and update that. So we can be able to learn, um, about the potential impact to our surrounding schools. Students, um, and commuters. And that is all.
Thank you. Yeah, good suggestions.
Uh, yeah, I just wanna chime in and add on to what my fellow commissioners, uh, stated about the concerns. Uh yeah, I just wanna chime in and add on to uh what my fellow commissioners uh stated about the concerns, I agree, this relates to approval criteria number C. As far as um being uh being so having in a potential adverse um impact on the adjacent land uses and on the neighborhoods. Uh I'm very concerned about going from residential to mix, because as you know, as you stated. There's different land designations within the mix, um we don't know what we're gonna get. As far as the impact on the surrounding neighborhoods, um I read the uh the emails and from the folks that have lived there a long, long time. They seem to know that it's gonna have a an adverse impact on them, and so I would also uh voice uh against this um proposal. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, yeah, I I, you know, I guess the council, you know, what I give is. All these things are great feedback and I would encourage you to vote your conscious conscience on all of these in terms of. You know, I think there that's, you know, item C is the criteria that's in question probably most and. I think there, the other thing is to keep in mind is no matter what happens and what we recommend, we are just recommenders to city council. City council can also change their mind or agree with us. And so there are so many steps in this project, process, so I think the next step we will have um. A, staff will come back with the more granular or uh final assessment on against this criteria. They will come back with a recommendation. We will, uh if we feel comfortable, uh after hearing the public's comments in the next meeting, we will either. Vote to recommend or not and uh move it to, or we will decide to have another public hearing or ask staff to look at other alternatives, so. I think it's part of the process and uh I think it's very important that we allow the process regardless of how we feel about the project. Or potential projects or 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 the or the application, so I'm glad we're doing it, but it is a little bit complex, so. With that, I think we will move on to our final. Go ahead and talk about, is is that, you wanna talk about the next steps in the last slide there?
Yeah, so, but well, today um uh is the workshop and then next month we'll prepare for a public hearing. We'll also prepare um a series of recommendations, just to provide that for the planning commission and and based on the feedback. Um and the deliberation that occurs, uh recommendation could be made or not, and if not, then we can uh certainly conduct a second public hearing in June. At that point, we would certainly uh hope to see a recommendation uh from the commission, that way it could be forwarded to city council. There is another item that is also on the docket, that's already in front of council. That's been through the planning commission process, so that item essentially um is pending decision as well. Until this item can go to the planning commission, I'm sorry, to council and essentially join it um for uh approval of a a docket as a whole.
Great, thank you. Well, then let's uh conclude tonight with the last workshop item, which is the overnight truck habitation update, I think. Also a code amendment, I, or it's a code amendment, not a plan amendment.
Good evening, members of the planning commission, this is an item that you've seen at uh twice now. This is the second workshop associated with it, during the last workshop, we provided a little bit of background about uh what the uh proposal consisted of. Uh and essentially, um the city staff received a private up initiation of a code amendment to accommodate overnight truck habitation. While we have similar um allowed uses in the city such as recreational vehicle parks or, you know, parking. For vehicles, we do not have anything that accommodates the overnight. Parking um along with sort of a lodging uh component element associated with um freight related vehicles. Per the Pasco municipal code, the planning commission can initiate an open record hearing, we would recommend doing that at next month's um planning commission meeting. So we wanted to provide a little bit of background, you saw some of this last month with respects to the um. The growing need uh for services that provide for um amenities and and general services for um our freight. Drivers across the country, certainly Pasco and the region is home to significant amount of freight uh related travel. The map that you see on the screen um right now is the freights and good transportation system map, otherwise known as FGTS. It is a map uh produced by the Washington State Department of Commerce, which uh identifies corridors in the state. Based on um the level of freight volumes that they. They they house, those range from T one to T five. There are several of these within um the tri cities um region and certainly several within uh the city limits as well, ranging from. North Road sixty eight, Interstate one eighty two, Lewis, Oregon Avenue, A Street, Ainsworth, et cetera. Certainly a lot of freight use, given the industrial and um economy uh around the region for sure, which is expected to grow with the um. Increasing uh demands here. Currently, uh parking, um like parking such as this, uh these are permitted in the I two and I three zoning districts. Those are zoning districts that are only allowed within the industrial land use. In gray, you can see um where those uh existing zoning districts are located, north of three ninety five. And obviously um south of A Street. Towards the eastern, southeastern edge of the city limits. The proposal did ask to take a look at um allowing the use in a C three zone. C three is a zone that is permitted in the commercial land use, and so what you see here are the uh commercial. Commercially zoned um areas in red, along with the existing gray areas for um the industrial land use. So you can kind of see the difference between where commercial is um allocated in the community uh versus industrial. In the staff report, there's more detail about these, but we wanted to provide the planning commission with an initial preliminary guideline, potential standards that. Might be helpful in delivering uh what potential standards could look like, and so I'll run through the details, uh provide the details that are. Described in the uh staff report, um these are bullet pointed on the screen um in front of you. So some of these guidelines could include uh taking a look at things such as the site location and proximity, so for et- for et cetera. For example, uh ensuring that location is designated for overnight truck habitation or strategically placed to minimize disruption to. Residential areas or public spaces, sensitive facilities such as schools or hospitals, these are just examples, um not an official proposal. Another guideline could be uh establishing a distance requirement. That could be something along the lines of establishing a minimum distance. From residential areas, public parks, schools and other sensitive locations, so for example, the standard could say something along the lines of. Overnight truck parking habitation may not be permitted within one thousand feet of a residential area. Et cetera, so these are just kind of some examples of what could be. Used for consideration of development of a standard. Also, um site design and layout, um requiring site design that maximizes space efficiency while ensuring adequate spacing between trucks. For safety and movement, uh consideration for the provision of designated parking space. Access to and out of the site itself, circulation out and then within the site. Should there be provisions for maximum allowed space, so is there a maximum uh space that you would like to see um allowed for this type of use? Or is there a minimum lot size that you would like to see for this kind of use? Provisions for security and safety such as um security measures, perimeter fencing, cameras, adequate lighting. Environmental considerations, this came up during the last planning commission presentation with respects to uh measures to minimize environmental impact. Stormwater management, waste disposal facilities. Mitigations to reduce emissions and noise pollution from idling trucks, for example. Amenities and services. Is this something that the planning commission would like to see? Associated with the standards, so essential amenities such as um onsite uh sanitary. Facilities, restroom facilities, waste disposal stations, et cetera. Latcape landscaping and aesthetics. Regulatory compliance, so if uh one of the options that was um. Shared at the last meeting that this was presented was the difference between a by right approval process and an industrial land use versus. Potentially a special permit uh process for non uh industrial uses, for exa- for example, the C three zone. And if that were the case, what are the criteria that you would like to? See associated with this related to a special permit that would ensure compliance with that on an annual basis? Provisions for traffic management, um requiring um maybe some some sort of analysis. To ensure that access um and impacts, identifying um necessary improvements or mitigations such as designated truck routes or traffic code measures. This is a truck uh facility, um so it, one would expect to see a lot of trucks using the streets to get to this truck facility. So are there some things you'd like to see associated with those if this were to be allowed? And then maintenance and management, so um high level for now, but staff at this point is is simply looking for planning commission guide on guidance on. If any of these um are of interest, if none of these are of interest. In particular, I think one of the big ones that um the the big, uh I think qualifiers that would. I think change the direction you go or that potentially would go, would be based on where this would be allowed, so if you want. A special permit process for the C three zone, those provisions might be different than what you would allow in an industrial zone, given the industrial. Nature of development. And so I think that would be one um element that um staff would appreciate and and welcome feedback and guidance on. These others can certainly be massaged based on planning commission direction. Next steps include um. Establishing a public hearing, noticing for a public hearing in May, uh we can attach a recommendation that the planning commission is comfortable with that. And then um if not, we can certainly push uh to a second public hearing, but at that point, we'd probably recommend at least some sort of recommendation to move this forward. Followed by city council, public hearings, um and an eventual determination um on the proposed code amendment. Along this line, staff will begin preparing um uh some public engagement opportunities as well, so. With that, that concludes the staff presentation on this code amendment, it's been before the commission twice now. And we would welcome any guidance uh or direction from the commission uh this evening, thank you.
Excellent, thank you, go ahead.
I apologize if uh this has been asked before, but uh do we have a definition as to what's what's a truck, are we talking? Potato trucks, ten wheelers, uh tractor trailers, are we talking panel trucks?
I I believe the intended use um was uh for uh general freight related uses, so it it could potentially be something with. Goods essentially still in them, although I'm not sure if that makes any sense from a market perspective. Well, it's not a public hearing, I I believe we do have the applicant or the initiator of the the code amendment here, and this isn't a public hearing, but. If you have a specific question, um the applicant, if they're available and willing, they they might be able to answer any specific questions that that I can answer for you.
I think that would be beneficial.
I'm John Schlein with Before Development, thirty one thirty, Barning Lane. I think the best answer would be that it's for freight uh vehicles that are uh part of a fleet. That's the main concept, so a lot of these fleet vehicles um that are out on the roads, they move around the. Interstates like robots, and they're told where they can stop and where they can start, start and where they can sleep and where they have to fill up with gas. So the company that wants to do this is a member of one of these organizations that tells their truckers where they can go. And so this would be a place where they say, you're on your way to Amazon, you're gonna stop at this location and stay the night there. And then pick up your load first thing in the morning and go on your way, so that's the concept of the fleet trucks.
Uh trying to um figure out what the need is, is there a, just a lack of facilities, like gas stations with limited. Uh spaces where uh somebody can park a tractor trailer? Is that part of the the reasoning why are you making this proposal?
Yeah, so when we were originally presented this, we showed some stats from the um DOT and how. Eighty-five percent of truckers can't find a place to park, and so they're parking on interstates quite often. On the entryways and all of that, and so there are ways to stay at gas stations, you know, like Loves. But they don't necessarily focus on the route in which these people are going, so we know with Amazon, they're gonna have a lot of trucks coming in. And so this fleet department says, we know the the truckload that's gonna be going to Amazon. And we believe this would benefit them so that they can only drive for so many hours and then they have to sleep. And so bring them there, load them up, you're you're getting prepared to go in and get your load and then leave. So there are opportunities at places like Loves, but they are limited, they don't have a lot of overnight regular stops. There's a place in North Bend that if you were to drive there in the evening, around seven o'clock at night. We counted over a hundred and ten truckers on the on-ramp one night alone, as they prepare to go into Seattle. And so they they have to stop and sleep. And so they get on the on-ramp and just park there, and it creates a really dangerous situation, we don't see that much here yet. But as Amazon grows, as Dairy Gold grows, as all these uh intermodal, Tiger Express um grows. You're gonna see a lot more of that, I think.
I I think the ideal solution would be uh to have more facilities such as Loves with sharp facilities, um I think they would prefer that. Other than than just parking in a commercial area, um to spend the night whatever without the facility, so. But thank you, uh that uh.
I mean, the proposal we put forward included facilities, we included a video showing everything that it would include. The eventual goal would be that it would have a place for them, like a gym, showers, a place for them to relax, wifi. Twenty-four seven security, um so this isn't just a parking lot. This is a place for them to come and enjoy an evening. With their truck safe in a secure lot.
Great, thank you very much.
So um. Uh this. I I I realize it's a really big problem and um, you know, we. Give special thanks to this uh trucker, the truckers, I mean, they obviously do an outstanding job and and they're they're needed. And wh- wh- why in my mind do I think that this particular use doesn't belong? Period in C three zoning? When we have a lot of other areas. In in the gray zones that could accommodate all of this, all of these amenities for the for the truckers. But I can't imagine eighteen wheelers, I mean, I s- I saw the red on the map. Storming through the C three districts, because because to get to C three, you gotta go through a lot of other other districts as well. And it just sounds like a big, big confusing uh mess to me when, when again, I I'm all, I mean, I I'm I'm. I I I support the need for what you're asking for, I just think we can find what they need in all the gray areas. And um the trucks uh can 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 drive to those areas and use the amenities and facilities and and I'm all for that. But I but I I I would hate to s- to see this, I would hate to see C three opened up to truckers. Anyway, that's, and you know, I don't mean to be negative to truckers, I I appreciate them, but I just don't think. Put them in the C three zone is is the answer here, anyway. More later.
Go ahead, Nigel.
Commissioner Crutchfield, I concur with um what Commissioner Hindler mentioned, I think it's a great need. And um but I think strategically being placed in an area where the trucks have an ability to get to the facility. You know. Off of the interstate or with the least amount of disruption to. The C three area or any other, I noticed some of the areas here, um Lewis Street, A Street, Oregon Avenue, those are more in the corridor of where the industrial. But then we get out here, no- North Road sixty eight, Harris Road, Broadmore Boulevard. You know, we, I know that the large trucks and what they're hauling and so forth, you have. Damage to the roadways and the resident, you know, more of the residential. But I agree, it it's it's a great concept, I just think it needs to be really thought about where to place.
Yeah, I I think you, it's not a public hearing, so but if you, if it's a, if it's a specific question. Okay, just pre-brief. Are you, okay.
Well, I I I might be able to keep him from wanting to say anything or or add to what I have to say.
Yeah, I just don't want it to turn into a public hearing, cause that's.
So this is actually more for Jacob, and and can you throw the map back up of the red areas? And then back, if we remember the other uh meetings on this, right, we talked about that. We talked about everything you guys were talking about, and what we said was by this, by by this here and what you brought to us. Depending how this is written, it would actually negate a lot of that red. Exactly, special permit, it would negate a lot of that red, so the concern about North Road sixty eight, for example. Exactly, special permit. It would negate a lot of that red. So the concern about North Road sixty-eight, for example, would be could be gone. And so my understanding of the red is, yeah, technically it's all the red, but yet by special permit and by the writing of this. Which is what I believe you're asking tonight, is for us to go through one through ten, for example, and say, okay, this is what we. We think we should address in that section, would negate the vast majority of all that red. Am I wrong in that?
It it could potentially, e- especially when you consider uh uh, you know, if there's a provision where if you're in a C three zone. Or a non-industrial area for a proximity threshold, um then um then certainly, right? If if the requirement is you're. Five hundred feet or one thousand feet from a certain use, well, if you're within that threshold, well, then that you would not be permitted. So the special permit would essentially be denied. Uh, some of those may be more applicable, not only as a special permit, but certainly just outright. Whether it's in an industrial zone or not, because we do have industrial areas that are but residential, so that might be something that uh the planning commission might. Want to consider uh placing in both. Um, at this stage, we're simply trying to get a gauge of of what direction you would like to sort of set staff on. Um, to say all those sorts, and we'll come back with a more maybe likely a table that indicates um if the C three zone. Is still of interest uh by the planning commission to pursue, then these are the provisions for a C three zone. And in an industrial zone. These are the provisions. There might be some matches, there might be some overlap, but I would ex- I would expect that there might be some differences between the two um criteria.
Exactly. That that's exactly what I thought. Thank you. So. The point is to go through these one through ten in this workshop. So let's have a discussion on the one through ten. There, Jacob can make notes. Correct me or fix me if I'm wrong. Jacob can make notes. We can then come back. With multiple maps like that red one, with overlay saying, okay, if if we go with what we talked about in one. This is what it'll look like. If we go with what we talked about this, this is what it'll look like. So we have different map than that. Because I get it, that is scary to put this in all the red, but that's not what we're saying here, right?
It it correct, the the the, yeah, I mean, if you, what staff could do based on the results of this conversation this evening. Is prepare a series of buffer maps, essentially what you would, what would be done is a map that shows a thousand feet buffer from. The uses that you would like to protect from being with close proximity to this potential use. And you would see a bubble sort of around those uses. And when you, we do it all the time for transit planning, for quarter planning, et cetera. Um, those bubbles begin to take up quite a bit of area. So while you uh you know, wanna maybe use that to protect that. Uh, potential use, there's also sensitivity to essentially outright not allowing it anywhere if those bubbles get out of control, so to speak. So. I think that's where the nuances live and we record these meetings, so we can certainly, I'll take down the notes that I can this evening along with um department assistant, but. Um, certainly we'll be able to come back at the next meeting with uh more clarity based on the results of this discussion this evening.
Yeah, I think, you know, uh, I think tonight, if you have feedback, I mean, you've evolved this and you've based it on our previous discussion. And so this is a really great start on these ten standards. I think if commissioners have specific. Ideas or feedback on these ten stan- any of these ten standard areas, then staff could further evolve these for the next step. And also based on this conversation. Uh, so if you have specific inputs on any of these ten items, I think now's the time to give that feedback.
Well, I think this is so important and and everyone has great input so far. I think we need to go through each and every one. Start with one, read it off, discuss it. Two, read it off, discuss it. And if there's no discussion, great, move on to the next one. But I think we need to go step by step, one through ten.
Okay, um. I don't know that that's super efficient, but we can certainly go through each one and say, uh, on number one, site proximity, again. Staff has given us some their preliminary standards and guidelines. Are, is there any additional set things you would say on those on those additional? Uh, guide on the on site location on proximity, they've got a bunch of things strategically disruption. Are there any other additional things you'd like to add? Anyone would like to add to that?
This is Commissioner Lerman.
Yeah.
Um, before we get jumping into the one through ten, I do have a clarifying question and sorry, um, I did have my hand up for a while. So I didn't mean to blur it out.
We can't uh, we can't see your hands, sorry.
Okay, not a problem. So, um, uh, to Jacob. At one point in our last meeting, when we uh first had this presented to us, there was something to mention about site standards um similar to. Um, like KOA or um uh in-town um uh RV sites. How similar did those standards that you had you had mentioned at the time align with the one through ten that were created here?
Uh, uh, what's been shared in the staff reports so far is fairly high levels, so there's no specifics with respects to, you know, a setback requirements or. Specific landscaping requirements or fencing requirements, et cetera. Um, what we did include um was. The idea that those might be appropriate here based on the planning commission's direction. Um, I I don't have the uh standards for recreational vehicle parks and KOAs um up here, but we can certainly provide a comparison between the two. Um, uh, at an upcoming meeting.
Okay, thank you, cause my brain um thinks of those kind of facilities a little bit similar to uh these uh. Truck hotels. I mean, if they got gyms, maybe that's what we should call it. Um, landscaping and all. But um to just kinda like, as we have those kind of facilities here in Pasco, to kinda drive around and kinda imagine what um our. Um, future facilities might be added to our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone? Again, I can't see the hands, so. Um, so Jacob covered each, he read each of these verbatim on the ten items as he was doing his presentation. I guess what I would ask is, in any of these ten, go around the the table, if you have specific feedback on any of these ten items. Other ideas for staff that you'd like to provide, please, let's let's do so. Um.
This is probably out of scope. Um, um, but anyways, in every time that I see a a truck and trailer go through Road sixty-eight. I I always think to myself, wouldn't it be great if we have a truck route? Um, but anyways, that's probably just wishful thinking, but I can't think of a better way to um protect the residential communities from the impacts of this. Proposal. Thank you.
So again, I ask, we we looked at site location and proximity was the first one. Uh, Jacob discussed what this was. And what their preliminary recommendation is, or do you have any tweaks to that? If any commissioners have any ideas, that would be great. If not, um, what any of the. We can go to distance requi- uh requirements. I mean, I I think a thousand feet, you know, again, is a great start, but if you think you have preferences. Again, I think what we'll see next time is we'll see a table, again, with something like a thousand feet. And if you'd like it to be two thousand, we can make that recommendation at that time as well. Uh, in the table.
So Commissioner Moff here, a thousand feet, I I don't I don't know what that is, honestly. Um. But I can tell you, if they put one of these in my neighborhood, I would want it two blocks away. I'm sure that's more than a thousand feet. No?
It's five thousand feet in a mile.
Oh, is that right? I don't know why you ask. So so two blocks away would be less or more than, less than a thousand feet? Okay, so a thousand feet, I guess would be all right. Um, but that's, this is just what I'm thinking, cause but you say that's for example, right? So so this is what Jacob's looking for, is more posit- more concrete information from us, not just example, correct?
Yeah, it it's, we we can certainly uh do the best that we can, I think, correctly under, you know, understand where the planning commission's. Uh, primary concerns um are um based on the last several conversations. There are obviously uh concerns related to not only being. Um, within proximity to residential neighborhoods, but certainly um locations that would um encourage. Or allow for, um, not allow, but encourage or direct um folks trying to utilize this potential site in the future. From navigating through areas that include residential neighborhoods. Um, so I think, you know, the the distance proximity certainly is is a start. It's an example. There's probably examples from other communities about similar like uses. I'm sure that we could reference and provide it to the planning commission, but I think what I've heard so far is not an outright. Um, uh, ban uh within the C three zone, but likely a special permit with criteria that include a lot of what we've discussed this evening. Is 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 that correct?
That's how I see it. Uh, I I it's gonna be site-specific, but but I think, I think, I mean. I couldn't, you know, all of these these ten criteria, if they're all gonna be different for different sites. And that's what we can't really discuss here. Uh, and I mean, I I'm just saying, in 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 general. I I I look at those red areas and I under, you you know, I, if they fall off the map, great, but I I just. I I would have a whole left to say about these ten, these ten uh items. If you pointed to one, one of those red areas. I could talk a lot, uh but but right, I'm just, but 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 being general right now, I'm just saying. We have to be real, real careful about this. And I and again, I'm I'm all for solving the truckers problem, I and helping them out and I. We we need to do that, but I'm not so sure it's in the red areas. Anyway.
So, um, I think again, if you think about it, these ten were based on our previous conversation. If you weren't here for that meeting, then that's unfortunate. But these ten were based on our previous conversation, based on the guidance we gave staff. So the next evolution is staff said, based on those areas that you cited that you're concerned about, here's some recommendations. So I think the next step would be, if you have feedback on those recommendations, now would be a great time. Otherwise, staff will continue to refine those. Um, and come back with even better ones and maybe a table form and maybe some implications of. You know, graphical what that might look like, and that would help kinda make decisions. But I think that's kind of the flow, what the intention is here, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Um, I I did have a question on, I and we did spend a lot of time in the last meeting or the last time this came up. Um, on the special permit, and I think that was really how we felt like we could mitigate the red area. And I think it's a very effective tool for that, cause it used in other things, right? Um, I guess the question I had is on the special permitting, is it also possible to time bound that? To say you've got a five-year permit, but if this is a mess and you guys don't keep it up, we can revoke your permit? Is that another option on special permitting?
Yeah, absolutely. In fact, uh, part of the final conditions of approval for a special permit, um, there's language along the lines of. Uh, you know, failure to comply uh may result in uh um a loss of the special permit, which means you you would not be allowed to operate the. The use for the business.
Yeah, cause that's even a further thing, is like if this starts off great, and then five years it goes downhill. And it's messy and dirty and noisy and we got trucks parking in neighborhoods, we can say, yeah, you're out of, you're out of business because it's just not working out. Okay, any other specific, I mean, again, these ten areas, if you saw something there you'd like to give staff specific feedback on. That this would be a great time for that. Commissioner Crutchfield.
This is Commissioner. I think some of these kinda intersect with one another, so I think these are really good, the the items here. Number nine with the traffic management, and it does kinda speak to um mitigating or improvements or designated. Truck route like um Commissioner talked about earlier, which I think might be really important. Or something we should look at just to make sure that we're keeping some of that traffic out of the residential areas. To get to their destination. So I, I think number nine is very important. But it does intersect with other numbers in your chart here. Thank you.
Also heard somebody on the phone or on the on the Zoom or?
Yeah, this is Commissioner Lerman.
Great.
Um, so to piggyback on to uh what you shared there, um, it would be nice to see a list for the specialty permit. Of um different criterias uh that can be enacted within that special permit. And then, um, Jacob, you had mentioned about um during your presentation that there could be maximum. Um, lot sizes and minimum lot sizes and, um, so I didn't see that on the list of one through ten.
It's a site design and layout, I believe.
Oh, um, okay. Yeah, so if your staff can come back with um two different uh sizes. And then show us on the map where that would fit in um coordination and over- overlap with the um specialty. Or C three and the industrial. I think that might also help us kinda conceptualize. What this possibly look like in our community and where it could be placed.
Yeah, it's a good point, because if, you know, the maximum or uh or the minimum size is a certain size and that won't fit in a red area. That eliminates a red area, right?
And then my um third um statement, or this one's a question to to Jacob. Remember. Our last meeting, I had asked about um if you could provide examples of other towns and uh their codes. Um, if these one through ten, if that mimics any um towns in the northwest. Um, and the codes they have in place for it, just out of curiosity.
Uh, there were a few, in particular, a lot of them are obviously on the I ninety corridor, um, at Clella, North Bend, et cetera. That's that's where we found the provision for the threat, the threshold distance with respects of a thousand feet. I forgot. Uh, one of them was residential uses, I think another one was hospitals and schools. Um, this is a a. Particul- this is a somewhat different uh use, is the primary intended use of this is an overnight truck habitation. You know, of use, um, which is different than what we have essentially at a Loves, which a secondary or a third use of Loves is the. You know, eight stalls or twenty stalls, et cetera, for overnight truck parking. Uh, so that that's where the difference is coming to play, but we can certainly take a further look. Uh, not only in Washington, but other uh communities a- across the country that are experiencing similar growth. Um, and see what they have and and prepare that for the planning commission as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, whenever she's done.
Is that it, Commissioner Lerman? Anything else?
That is all this time.
Awesome. Uh, Commissioner Moffett has some more to add.
Jacob, uh, during the last meeting, we asked for a list of current facilities that are like what's being proposed. Uh, I don't see that here. Do you have that or can you get that for us?
Yeah, we we can.
Cause I wanna drive and see one or two.
Go ahead.
So, ha- ha- having having done work on similar facilities uh in in my career. Um, I I just wanna remind everybody that. One of these facilities, to ma- to have it be feasible, is gonna have to accommodate a lot of trucks. You're not talking like one or two or three. I'm talking like a lot of trucks in all the turning raises and all the. And all the facilities and all this stuff is necessary to be provided for these trucks. And it's gonna be a lot of trucks, so this is no small endeavor to to for for it to be feasible and for it to be done right. I just wanna, I just wanna make that clear, that we're not talking about a couple of parking places a truck can pull in and 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 it's it's gonna be a. A a large area with a lot of facilities and 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 in order for it to really be feasible. And to provide the amenities that these truckers are gonna need, it's gonna take a lot of area. Anyway, I just wanna make that clear.
It uh might be good if you have some experience from your previous life of what you see. Is one of the things that we're gonna talk about is, as Commissioner Lerman also pointed out, is what is the minimum lot size? And if there are recommendations you have, that'd be great for staff to have that input as well, cause you know, is it acre, is it five acres, is it thirty acres? Those are, those are some of the things that would be helpful.
And what are they gonna charge? And what's what's a, y- you know, what's a trucker gonna be charged to to pull in there for for the night and 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 use all the facilities? And is it gonna be able, is it gonna be feasible economically to build the the facility? Yes, it's it's a big, it's a big issue.
Thank you. Um, any other commissioners that have uh criteria or, I'm sorry, guideline and standard feedback for staff on these ten areas? That you'd like to see additional items or or tweaks? Um, certainly staff will continue to iterate on this and come back with some recommendations. Next time that are further evolved, but any others you'd like to pass on now? On the phone, I can't see your hands, so go ahead and speak up.
Just in in a a final, final thing, Jerry, um, I would encourage the the commission. Let's go take a look at some of these facilities. Um, i- it it would really, I think, shed a lot of light on what it is we're talking about here. I think that'd really be important.
I just went past the North Bend one last night and stopped there, and it's a massive complex.
So, um, this is Commissioner Lerman, and I just wanna go ahead and piggyback on to what Hindler was saying. Um, I I did take the time to uh reach out to some of my former students who are now in the um. who are now in the, either owning of a truck, trucking business, or they are truck drivers. And one of them had mentioned that there used to be a facility like this outside of Hermiston, between Hermiston and Eglee Boardman. And they said that eventually it just got too expensive and people stopped going. And so then it became vacant and now that was the community's problem. I, all three agreed that this is, seems like a very beneficial facility, something of need. They all mentioned it's difficult to be able to park trucks within city limits and to be able to find lots to be able to do that. And then they all mentioned about security issues on-site as well as security issues around the community. And so I just wanted to bring that up, that those are three different Pasco residents whose livelihood is based off of the trucking industry.
Thank you, Commissioner Lerman. Commissioner Teal or Commissioner Campos, anything from you on this? All right, hearing done. Oh, go ahead.
No, just, I, I think Jacob and City Staff did a great job in kind of hit, pinpointing all the other stuff that we said prior with those ten things. I don't see anyone that, to add, but I think every one of those is important and we just want to make sure that we get those all those right. So thank you, Jacob.
Thank you.
All right, what's the next steps then on this one?
Staff will re-watch this meeting a couple of times and come back. I think we're going to intend to come back at the May meeting with a little bit more information and clarity and break down along, of, of the proposal along with potential standards like those that you see on the screen, along with a few examples, both within our region and outside, and comparisons to what may be available in other communities to reference and then provide that to the planning commission. So our intent is to come back in May with, with some more information.
Excellent, thank you. All right, that's our last workshop item. From an other business perspective, I did want to bring up our April thirtieth meeting and have you give a quick review of that and then also make sure that we still have the commitment for, for that date, because I think we've got some good business to do on that date. So Jacob, you want to give us an overview of the thirtieth?
Yes, April thirtieth has been scheduled for a special meeting of the Planning Commission to consider substantial changes to the Community Development Block Grant Allocation Program with respects to amending the funding for Lewis Street corridor improvements related to Second and Fifth Avenue and developing a, a micro enterprise fund to support impacted businesses of the Lewis Street overpass. So the meeting on April thirtieth, held here at Pasco City Hall in City Council chambers, will be conducted at six thirty PM. Yes, a, a decision and a recommendation will be provided along with a presentation to the Planning Commission. So certainly a quorum would be welcome and appreciated by staff.
Excellent. And that is also a Tuesday, so it's not a Thursday, so don't show up on Thursday of that week. It's Tuesday. The other thing is, I believe the way that's going to work is we have three hundred-some-odd thousand, that it's going to be similar to the community block grant thing where we have applicants that may, will be here to maybe testify or present? Or is that how it's going to work or how's, how's the format?
I know, I, I don't believe, and our block grant administrator will correct me if I'm misinterpreting the, the contents of the meeting, of the public hearing. But essentially, the meeting is to reallocate those funds to potential impacted businesses. And then right now, there is an application process that if it's not aligned already, will be very shortly for applicants to apply. But I don't believe the intent of that meeting on the thirtieth is for the Planning Commission to deliberate on specific applications themselves. There is a criteria, there are rules that applicants must meet in order to be eligible for the funding. But that will happen throughout the next several weeks, assuming that the, the recommendation is, is approved.
So you'll have a, you'll have a staff scoring a rubric by which you assess those applications and you will make a recommendation of the amounts and applicants? And then it'll simply be for us to discuss and approve or recommend to council?
Yeah, but just the total amount, not the actual applicants themselves.
Gotcha. Right. Any questions on the April thirtieth meeting from commissioners?
This is Commissioner Lerman. So we're having a meeting to decide if we're going to reallocate that money. In the meantime, there is an application being created and will be posted prior to the meeting for people to fill out in hopes that we say yes. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. And the block grant administrator will, will provide an email to summarize information in advance of the meeting. So the planning commissioner has this in advance, but essentially that is correct. Given the, the constraints and the impacts on the businesses related to the overpass construction, the closure of the streets, et cetera, the direction from council was to try to expedite the application process so some of this can move forward without final approval until an actual decision is made.
Okay.
Thank you.
If nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. We are adjourned at eight oh seven PM. Thank you.